Vladimirova, is that right? I'm sorry.
You did very well, Kamalia Vodymirova. I've been a homeowner in Brisbane for 10 years. And I wanted to say that I support the recommendation of the planning commission. And in response to all the organizations from the San Mateo County that spoke in terms of the need for more affordable housing, I wanted to say that the problem with the Baylands is that it's a highly toxic area and the cleanup of this area is extremely expensive and we don't know whether this cleanup will ever be completed. And that's actually what's driving the high cost of the development on the Baylands and what necessitates for more than 4,000 units to be built there in order for UPC to actually make money from this project. So it's not a sustainable project. And the housing on the Baylands will not materialize for more than 10 years. So we are not going to see sustainable housing available for people to move in on the Baylands anytime soon. So this is simply not economically sustainable and viable project. And as a long-term Brisbane homeowner, I would say that the Brisbane community is not against development, but we're in support of sustainable, intelligent development. And Brisbane has other areas like the Parkside Village, the Crocker Park, and the Marina where housing can be built and it would not require the high cost of the toxic cleanup, which is really the big problem with the Baylands. So I appreciate you fully evaluating this project and not supporting the UPC's recommendation because I do not consider it a financially viable recommendation. If UPC thinks they can build housing, the question is where will the financing come from? This is an extremely expensive project. And we would like to see commitment letters of the investors that they have lined up to provide the billion or more dollars that are needed to build 4,000 units on the Baylands. So if UPC has already secured the funding, we would like to see that from them. Thank you.
Thank you. Ken, I'm not sure, the lights are not showing, just so you know. Tom Hines.
Good evening, commissioners. I want to thank you for what you, the service that you've been putting in. I really appreciate it. And I do want to thank you. I also want to thank some of our forefathers in 1994 who had the good conscience and vision to say, "We do not, the people of Brisbane are not willing to accept the risk of people living on toxic land." I was watching at home, and I'm listening to all these eloquent speakers tonight, but they're ill-informed. It's not about, if I may, through the chair, address some of these speakers. It's not about us not wanting to grow. It's about not accepting the risk of people living on toxic land. It is required by law that the developer clean up that land before building. So all these eloquent speakers are speaking, are barking up the wrong tree. It's not our problem. It's the developer's problem. They should be pressuring the developer to clean it up. Not us. It's not our problem. We had the vision years ago to say no. I hope you uphold that vision. Thank you.
Thank you. Paul Buschall.
Paul Buschall, Brisbane resident. And I want to thank you commissioners for all the hard work that you've put in to this process. And, you know, I sat on the DEIR committee. It was a lot of work. And, you know, while there are different opinions on the contents of the materials that we had, there was one clear wording, there was wording in there that was a concern of mine. And at the end of every chapter, when they talked about mitigated measures, it was stated, "When feasible." And my comment was, "Who's going to determine if it's feasible or not?" You know, those measures are really important. And if we can't uphold the mitigated measures, then how can a project proceed? And lastly, I had other comments I was going to make, but they've been said. Lastly, one of my concerns is, is that there's already a determination that 25% of the total property is to be set aside, was said to be set aside for open space. The words are actually open space and/or open area. And the words and/or are a real concern. Because open space means public property and open area means private property. So I would hope through our findings and continued meetings that we can make that wording more clear and direct as to what are we talking about? Open space and/or open area. Thank you.
Thank you. Melissa Vivas.
Hi, thank you, Commissioner. My name's Melissa Vivas. I'm a resident of Brisbane. And I just, won't take long, I just want to weigh in in support of your proposed recommendation. I haven't read the EIR, and I really commend all of you who have and for doing your homework. I am, I've lived here 25 years and I'm the mother of two of those young adults who can't afford to live in the Bay Area. However, I would not want them to be living on a toxic landfill. I don't think that's an appropriate place for human beings to live. The proposal for 4,000 units is completely out of proportion for this town and would overwhelm the town and bifurcate the town, as Amy said. I just want to weigh in and say that I support your proposed recommendation. Thank you very much for your work.
Thank you. Don Wagner.
My name is Don Wagner. I'm a Brisbane resident for the last 16 years. I know that because my daughter was born while we lived in Brisbane. And I would just like to say that I'd like to see that my children have a place to live. I moved here because it's a great community. And I was worried when the ridge was going to be built, that it was going to change the community. And it did not change the community. I think it enhanced the community. I'm also pro-labor. I've been blessed to be part of Local 467, plumbers and pipe fitters. And in order for me to live here and raise my family here, I got to go into San Francisco to do all my work. And that comes with its complications. But I would not be able to raise my family in the Bay Area if it wasn't for the pro-labor movement and also for San Francisco providing the opportunity to be able to have a construction job. I would like to work in other industries, but this is a wonderful industry. It's something that I enjoy doing. And I think that Brisbane can open themselves up to some residents. And I believe that there should be more housing because we need more housing. Otherwise, my children will have to move outside the community. I was just very lucky and very blessed to be able to move here. And somebody built my house. Somebody built this community so that I had an opportunity to live here. And there's other communities that have been doing their part. I work in San Francisco. And it's not all low-income housing, but they're doing a tremendous job up there in trying to keep up with having all these jobs that they're providing to be able to also house them. And I think that if Brisbane's going to build on the Baylands, they also should do their part in allowing some housing. And I would like to thank you for hearing me out.
Thank you. Deb Horn.
Hi, I'm Deb Horn.
Horn, I'm sorry.
Brisbane resident. And I want to thank the commissioners and also the community for the thousands and thousands of hours you've put into deliberations on all the very important details you've had to study and consider. So I'm a fairly new resident. And I was attracted to Brisbane for our core values of sustainability, community, connectivity, safety. But I felt like perhaps some of the new people here about, hmm, maybe we should be a little more progressive about some things. And my initial feeling about this was, what's all this space doing out there not being used? And when I first learned about the development, it was about, I thought, cleaning up the toxic land. And of course, the more you study, the more you learn, the more you find out it's about capping it, that remediation isn't about cleanup. And as you know from all of your work, any risks such as sea rise or earthquake puts all of that land and all of that housing at great risk. And I think it's precisely here in Brisbane because we care about the people who live here. We also care about the people who don't live here. We don't want to put them at this risk. And as far as the housing needs, you know, and Brisbane doing its part, housing in the economy, there's booms and busts over all the years. The one problem we have that's not going away is climate change. And that's where Brisbane is doing its part. With open space, sustainability, energy generation, the community, sustainable plan, we are in Brisbane making a contribution to the regional needs. And I think that's important to recognize. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Lior Tanwakko. I am one of the pro-housing folks here tonight. And I wanted to address the idea that we are a bunch of young kids who came in from other places to, who don't care about Brisbane or your quality of life. And my mom lives here. I care about Brisbane a lot. I care about the Bay Area a lot. And it is really difficult to watch my friends move away because they can't afford to live here anymore. I don't know if I mentioned that I'm a third-generation Bay Area resident, but, you know, the cost of housing and the cost of living here just isn't keeping up with, sorry, it's too high compared to the wages. And, you know, my grandparents were able to buy land here and save for three, four years. And myself and my peers were thinking about, all right, if we want to buy a house in the Bay Area, we've got to have a couple million dollars. So that's the reality that we're living in. And if you build housing on your land, it would be, it would be a lot easier for us to afford a place to live around here. And it would be 15% affordable. And it would be something that you guys could leave to future generations. So I hope that you include housing in this decision. And I hope that you think with a forward eye, with an eye to the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Dave Grumow.
Okay, so this is...
Yeah, hi, I'm Dave Grumow, Brisbane resident, lived here for eight years. And I was involved with the draft EIR committee. And unfortunately, I didn't get a chance to really follow up with the EIR. However, I just wanted to express a few of the concerns that came up to me with my background. I'm in the construction trades, in project management. And when Debra just spoke, she was right. There is a big portion of it, of their plan is to cap the existing grounds. And so one of the concerns I have is settling underneath that. And I guess what's, one thing that really concerns me is Brisbane being on the hook in future if there are problems, structural problems, also liquefaction after an earthquake, if there's, if there's, you know, the hardscapes get broken up and things like that. I know it all gets engineered and that sort of thing, but to me it is a concern. Also, one of the speakers talked about the fact that there's going to be a lot of parking out there. He saw it as being, and that's true. A large part of that is because the parking's going to have to be mandated. I mean, there's codes and everything else on the number of parking spaces per units. And if you have, if you have homes there, there's going to be a lot of, a lot more parking required. But one other aspect to that is there's, keep in mind, you won't be able to go down. They're not going to be able to dig down and dig underground parking lots and that sort of thing. Everything would have to be above ground because you can't disturb that soil. I mean, that's part of it, is you cap it, you don't disturb it. And so those, and then the last thing I really wanted to touch on is, when I moved to Brisbane, my real estate papers included all the disclosures. And I invite everybody to take a look at those disclosures. I moved here eight years ago, so it was still kind of fresh in my mind. There is a big stack and it tells everything that's out there and what the concern is. It's in, it's all public, public knowledge. I wasn't concerned about it because I live on the hill and the prevailing winds blow toward the bay. So I, I figure, you know, I'm not concerned about it. The, anybody who's living or working down on the Baylands isn't going to have that luxury. They'll be right there. And I see the light went on. So I thank you all for your time and I thank everybody, actually, people who came out here and are following your conscience. Thank you.
Thank you. So before we go to round two, we had two speakers who did, who were not available earlier. Tony Varios, would he like to speak now?
He's not here.
No?
He's not here.
Richard and Becky Wu. Okay. Okay. So Ms. Barbara Edel.
I just wanted to come up here and say support, and support, a few words in support of your guys' process. Because a lot of people have come up here tonight and said that we are, Brisbane is denying housing, and that's simply not true. We have, we have said yes to something better. We do have a plan. The plan for housing is called Parkside. The plan for sustainability is called not building beyond our means, what we can sustain in terms of water, power, and food. We have a plan for renewable energy called the Krebel Plan. We have, we're choosing not to contribute to the transportation woes. Adding 9,000 more cars to the Baylands plus the additional vehicles and persons from the surrounding projects to the densest part of 101 will not increase transportation sustainability, it will create a parking lot. I have an article by Helen Jarvis I want to send you that talks about how and why mixed use has not panned out as a solution for transportation problems. It's very well-written and very well-researched. And I just want everybody to consider what is being asked of Brisbane in terms of adding those 9,000 new residents. There are approximately 800,000 people living in San Francisco. That would be the equivalent of 3.2 million people living in San Francisco if they were to expect it to grow like Brisbane's being asked to grow. And that is just offensive. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Could you please fill out another form so we can, sorry, process so that when we come back, transparency is never at issue? Yeah. Sorry, Dana.
Well, I will continue on a matter that few people have noticed in the, what you're being asked to do, which is to certify an EIR, or at least I read that that's your recommendation. Partly, you, not wanting to certify this EIR is because of incorrect maps. The wetlands are not correctly mapped and some of the newer developer fabricated maps, which incorporate the lagoon marsh into the Baylands acreage are objectionable. The south end of the Baylands belongs to the State Lands Commission, to us, to the public, our open space, our open space. It is properly zoned as lagoon marsh, not Baylands. So when you drop down and include the lagoon as part of the Baylands and then have Mr. Scharfman say, "Hey, you're going to have open space, 150 acres of the lagoon." I'm sorry, that's already taken care of. That's already part of Brisbane. That is not part of the Baylands. And please do not allow that open space to be part of the calculation for the Baylands because there will be no open space if you do, if they could get away with it. Also, the certification of this EIR will incorporate a 2010 baseline conditions that had inadequate studies. There's little mention of the impacts of the current operations of the surcharging, little mention of Kinder Morgan's environmental impacts and their supposed remediation plan, little mention of the current laws and programs for renewable energy, sea level rise, and wetland restoration. More adequate studies might reveal that the proposed lumberyard relocation is too close to existing wetlands. The need to expand wetlands at current sea level, at the current sea levels for protection from storm surges in the future are of higher value to plans to cover them up with grading and more filling. Thank you.
Thanks.
Hi. Michelle Salmon, Brisbane resident. Part of me feels bad for the developer because this is a difficult process and a difficult problem. But they knew what they were buying into when they bought the property. And, sorry, you know, it is toxic. There is a lot of really, really bad stuff out there. And I know people who want housing are desperate for housing, want to live where they grew up. I understand that. I mean, I wanted to live where I grew up and I worked really, really hard and we only bought our house a few years ago. But, you know, that's not the way the future's going to go. And the planet, I mean, we really need to start controlling population. I'm sorry. It's just a reality. And the thoughts of having 3.2 million people in San Francisco, or 20 million people, or 25 million people, or 30 million people in the Bay, you know, I mean, where does it stop? Where do you draw the line? When we can't breathe, when we can't move, when no other living being, no plant, no animal, no butterfly, no fish, no anything can live here anymore? And then the Bay Area, you know, I mean, it goes back to a lot of the old slungs of the 60s, you know, of like pave over it, make a parking lot. No, that's not what we want to do here. And what we contribute to the Bay Area is open space and a little room to breathe, a little more ener, you know, some alternative energy solutions, some other way of thinking of things. And I appreciate that you're working towards that, I really do. So I'm sorry about the housing. But building more housing isn't going to solve the housing crisis. Thank you.
Thank you. Last chance. Really?
Lottery system.
Can we make sure that we're following process?
You need a card.
Well, you can do that from the audience. Thank you. Appreciate your cooperation.
I knew Tom is going to show up here again.
Yeah. Tom Hines again. Almost a 30-year resident. You know, everybody's talking about affordable housing. And that's all you hear, affordable housing. We need affordable housing. It's only half the equation. We need to demand higher livable wages. You know, the way corporate America is going, there'll never be affordable housing. Never. Never.
Okay. Thank you. Dave Grumow.
Yeah, I just wanted to come back, circle back to what I touched on with, with the chemicals that are out there. And if you think about the Baylands and its history, basically what you need to keep in mind is, with the railroad at its, at its most fundamental level, you have steel on steel, okay? You have steel rubbing against steel, whether it's the engine, the tracks, and all that needs to be lubricated, okay? And you need to lubricate it when you cut it, and you need to lubricate it when it's, when you, when it's, basically where I'm going with this is, all that lubrication was going back to 1907 or so, when they first started infilling that Baylands area after the earthquake with the rubble. And, and once they brought the locomotive yards out there and everything else, nobody was paying any attention to what happened with all that waste oil. And if you look down and you look at all the tracks, you look at the historical pictures and all the tracks and the roundhouse that's there, and you imagine for all those decades, all the work that transpired there, locomotive yards, the, the operation, the tracks, the trains, the sidings, everything happening there, all that oil, all that petroleum. And so that's, that's why I have concerns about it. It's just the volume and the VOC toxicity. Thank you.
Thank you. No one else?
No more.
Are we sure? Okay. Can I have a motion to close public hearing?
I make a motion to close the public hearing?
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
What's your pleasure?
I think we should schedule another meeting.
Or deliberations?
Yeah.
Okay. Is that okay with the rest of the commissioners?
Yeah, I think that's best.
Yes, agreed.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes. So we would like to have another Baylands meeting?
We have to.
Yeah, we have to.
So you want to continue this, your deliberations to the August 11th meeting? Is that your desire?
Be great.
Yes.
I won't be here on August 11th.
Can we arrange a special meeting date? We'll have to get...
I'm leaving on August 8th, so anything before that is okay with me.
Oh. That's, that works. May be fun.
About August...
Next Thursday is what today?
August 4th is next Thursday.
Sorry, can't do August 4th. Yeah, can't do that one.
No, that isn't canceled. Another date, you leave on what date? I'm sorry, commissioner.
I'm leaving on August 8th for about 10 days.
So it'd have to be either, you won't be back until the week of the 22nd?
Yes. Around that time, yeah. Around that time, yeah.
And we have the 25th, right?
We have the 25th.
Yeah, but 25th is your...
Regular schedule?
Regular date. Unless the commission's available on an alternate date sometime next week, it would have to be the 25th.
Do we have any business for the 11th?
Yeah, we could do that.
Can we switch up the regular business on to the 11th and...
We'll have to check on the schedule, but we can work around your needs.
Okay, thank you very much. We appreciate that. As we were looking at the comments given, and out of the 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7...
I had to take much education.
15 that were actually committed, or sent to us as written comments, over 2/3 were sent today. So folks, we need more time. If we're going to really consider what's being said and all the comments, and take everything to heart and weigh and balance, we're going to need you to give us more time. So in all fairness, we just didn't feel that that was sufficient time with 2/3 of the written comments alone submitted today. Just didn't have enough time to read it. And a white paper on top of that.
So if you could maybe take an action, a recommendation, a motion to continue to August 25th, that would be that.
Thank you. So can I have a motion to...
Through the chair, what you would want to be doing is adjourning this meeting to a date certain, August 25th of 2016, in which for the commission to deliberate on this particular matter. In that way, we would, you have closed a public hearing, and at that meeting, then it would be, on this item at least, just for the commission to deliberate, and you would not be taking any further public input or comment at that time.
Yes.
Yes. So can I have a motion to that effect?
I have a question first about the meeting of August 11th. That might still be happening, or we'll decide about that later?
We'll let the commission know if that meeting is still. This item will be continued to the 25th.
25th.
If we want to cancel your regularly scheduled meeting, that would happen by separate action.
Okay.
Works for me.
So could I have a motion to continue the Baylands hearing, I mean, sorry, close the Bayland hearing and continue deliberations on to the 25th?
Yeah, that's clear. I'll make that motion, that we close the public hearing for the Baylands deliberations tonight, and continue it for the regularly scheduled meeting of the 25th of August.
Okay, I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so, let's see.
Items initiated by...
Yes. Thank you, everyone, for coming. You're welcome to stay. Items initiated by the staff. You want to wait too? Yeah.
Let people leave, and then we'll talk.
Well, because he's done going to be here. Right, he leaves the 8th.
Do we have new business for the 11th we can do?
I think so. Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
It must be something else.
Okay.
Can't be mosquito only. Did you get close to the...
Okay, yeah, that makes sense.
Because a spider can do...
Okay, if we could have, if we could have the conversations move outside, we can continue the agenda. We appreciate it. Thank you.
I said one item, and that was on the, a couple of weeks ago, the council, there was an ordinance introduction you had considered some time ago regarding massage regulations for massage businesses.
Yeah.
The council initiated that process, that they ultimately chose not to move forward with that, so they ended up denying the ordinance amendment that they had requested you to consider.
Okay.
That was the only item I had.
Great.
I appreciate your work.
Thanks.
And items initiated by the commission? Anyone? I don't have anything.
No.
No? Okay. Can we make a motion to adjourn to a regular meeting of August 11?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to adjourn to our regular meeting of August 11.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good night.
I won't be here, so...